Oh, I've had giggles like that before. They never happen.
Good evening and welcome to the school district of the city of Dearborn. This is our regular scheduled meeting. Today is Monday, July 29th, 2024. It's close to 7:00 PM, so we'll call at 7:00 PM and I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Dambrosio.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Mosip.
Here.
Trustee Petchikoff.
Here.
Trustee Thorpe.
Here.
Trustee Watts here, President Barry.
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Executive Director will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I've brought with me today our Executive Director of Business Services, Staff and Human Services, our Executive Director of Student Achievement for the Dearborn High feeder track, and our Executive Director for Special Populations are joining us here today. We'll get certificates for them later.
They'll be in the mail.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Superintendent Updates.
Good evening, everyone, and I'll go down my list. My first update is on agenda items. It's retirements, and we always like to congratulate our retirees, thank them for the years of service. So we have Sandra Burrell, 16 years of service. Dennis Dombrowski, over 10 years of service. Robert Doyle, 24 years. Samia Hubashi, 31 years of service. Jeda Camberovsak, 23 years of service. Miriam Kobesi, 17 years. Aletta Polly Dory, over 19 years of service. If we can congratulate them. We'll send cards to them congratulating them. So I have a few comments on non-agenda. Just the summer. I hope everyone has been enjoying the summer. I know it's a good time to have downtime with your family. I did as well. Rejuvenated, ready to go back to work. We've been working for a while, getting ready for the next school year, so it's really positive, and I hope everyone has enjoyed some downtime through these summer months. Speaking of summer, my second item is our summer school program that was successful. The Ballmer Group Funding and United Way helped out. We received $7.2 million. There's a connection through the Ballmer that also funds our CIS. Mason Molly Bezi did a great job taking the lead for the district. I know she's done it before, pre-pandemic, and we were like, how can we find funding? And Steve Ballmer, who visited Salina on July 2nd, I was there with him, he was very impressed with the program. And obviously Sue Stanley, if you ever met with her, you know she's impressive with students. So it's very positive, and I believe we have a three-year commitment. And so very excited that we have 3,600 students that participated. Next year, we're going to look at recruiting, you know, more middle school students as well. And this is just another example where Dearborn is, we're going to make it work. I was in a meeting with other district leaders, and it was, there were things that were not from our district, but from other districts. And, you know, there was like complications because the timing, we're like, no, we're going to make this work for our students, and we know how to do it. So thank you, Mason, and the entire team that worked with her.
One quick question.
Sure.
This is the second of a third-year commitment, I'm assuming?
First.
This is the first of last year.
First of a three. Last year, we didn't have any because we didn't have funding when the federal ESTR dollars and COVID dried up. We did the two years where we had the large summer. So we knew how to do it because we had done it before, we were ready to roll. And thanks to the unions and all the groups for working together to make sure we could staff it.
So two more funded years.
Yes. Yeah. So. And Steve Ballmer is the owner. Somebody came and they got pictures because he owns the LA Clippers basketball team. Just so you're aware. Okay. Acceleration of learning, the committee and Hussein, President Barry, you've asked me to bring this up. There's no updates because they haven't met in the summer, but Ms. Faraja said they will, when they return in the end of August, they're going to start the meetings again and get that moving. I know there was a lot of positive momentum from last year, and it was something you had asked for.
Thank you.
There is an anti-bullying committee that's forming, and Zainab Sarini will be chairing that committee. She's working on getting memberships, and I know we have a couple board representatives. I know Trustee Watts and then President Barry plan to be involved. So we're excited to move forward and try to work to combat bullying and work in a positive manner. I also just want to mention grants, and you're aware that we approved Lauren Bereko as our grant specialist. Our team has really been working hard to find grants. I think the board has seen, we get this grant, that grant, we have another one in the works. When some of the funding dries up, we've been seeking out competitive dollars. And so, you know, we're very excited about some of those grant funding. The other thing, which I'm going to go to the budget next, you know, we had the state budget, and superintendents across the board and the associations weren't necessarily overly, you know, content with what came out of Lansing, but obviously we make it work. I think part of it, too, is a lot of districts, the federal dollars dried up. So we were very careful under Mr. Wall's leadership and us working with the board, where we tried not to put sustainable costs into one-time dollars, and that's why we have a solid budget. We were hoping for a little more dollars through the MIPsers and the School Aid Fund, but we also are pleased, too, that we're getting some money to fund CTE programs at the Berry Center, $2.5 million, and $1.5 million for green schools. Our senators and representatives were very involved, Santana, Mr. Farhat, Burns, they were supportive, but Senator Kamalary was also instrumental. He's the Chair of the Education Committee, so, you know, we're very grateful for that, but we're going to work on our budget and we should be fine. And part of the reason is because our team continues to work hard and find these grant funding sources. I also want to mention the calendar. Last year, you might recall, and this has happened before, where we try, we work very collaboratively with the union, and we try to advance plan the calendar, and then sometimes the potential Eid projection shifts, and that's happened a few times over the time I've been in the district. Well, this April, that did happen, or it was going to shift, and then it didn't, and we actually shifted the board meetings, if you remember, and then it turned out that it would have been okay. So what we're trying to do is be very proactive. And so some of the state rules, and I had to put out a communication, so back in April when that occurred, we're allowed six forgiveness days by the state. And those forgiveness days, the intent is for emergencies like snow cancellation. But the law does allow that if you were below count on any specific day, that you could potentially use those, and that's what happened because we went below count. However, we can't guarantee that because we may have a year where we need to use those six days. And so let's say we were to use all our six days and we went below count, and we didn't have enough 180 required days, we would have to seriously look at rescheduling another day in June. That's the reality if we're low attendance. It would be, roughly is about $1.2 million for the district, and it's in state law that this is the requirement. So we're hoping not to do that, and that's why we're working very positively with the union to try to predict. And so I don't have any details right now, but what I would say is I thank the DFT, and I know Mason and her team, they're working together, and we started, we started on it right away in May, right after this happened. And so we're hoping we're going to get something done soon to maybe accommodate more days. So that's, you know, very positive, and that was some good news that we had today, and more to come on that front. So just for the parents, there's no specifics, but we are trying to honor the community we serve, is to make sure that we have enough holidays, you know, around the Eid when that occurs. And, oh, the last thing I have is, I know the board is aware that I was MAS president last year. I'm no longer, but I'm past president, so I'm on the board for another year, but I've been on that board overall for six years. And it really is a positive because it gets the district in the know. I'm constantly in the know as to what's going on. We have influence in Lansing, so it benefits Dearborn students. We're, you know, advocating for all Michigan students, but it really is a positive when we, you know, go on to those committees and support our students and take initiative, and I've enjoyed it, and I think Dearborn's benefited. So I want to also mention, you know, we got Nicole Rayback on the MASPP board for the principals, and I actually presented at that conference in June. They wanted superintendents to come and talk about how you can work with principals and dealing with sensitive topics that might come to a board meeting, for example. That was one of the topics, and it was very positive, so congratulations to her. And I know we haven't met, but I know that Trustee Thorpe had his first meeting on the MASB board, and so congratulations to him and to Nicole, because those are important things, and it gives Dearborn the extra, you know, influence in the know, and now he's on that board, so congratulations and thank you. I know the board supported that, so, that initiative. So I wanted to mention those things. I think it's very important that, you know, we're all involved regionally. I'll just say, as superintendent, when we were going through the pandemic, one of the things that allowed me to get through were my associates and, for example, Wayne County Group and others, and how we collaborate together. So I think it's very, very important. So thank you and congratulations, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Maliko. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements, donations.
Mr. Wall.
Wasn't sure if there was recognitions and acknowledgements, too. For donations, we have one. I know there's many more in the works, they just probably haven't met the deadline for getting them on. So we received a donation of $1,000, has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the American Muslim Society, ASAMS, to be used for transportation to Cedar Point, and that's it.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting, Policy Committee meeting, June 3rd, 2024, Board Report 24-01, regular P-12 meeting, June 3rd, 2024, Board Report 24-02. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved?
Support.
So the motion moved by Trustee Thorpe, supported by Trustee Petchikoff. Are there any corrections, anybody saw, that need to be fixed? Hearing none. Are there any objections to the motion? Again, hearing none, please attach a unanimous approval. Thank you. It is a Monday. Been a while since you're here. Next item, please.
Union leadership commentary. This new section of the Board of Education meeting is being added to further enhance the already strong commitment and longtime partnership between district administration and all bargaining units. Both instructional and non-instructional union members serve on a wide variety of standing and ad hoc committees that drive the work and decision-making in the Dearborn Public Schools. In addition, administration meets monthly with the leadership team of all unions, as well as a group meeting with union presidents. These meetings are not required, bar an extension of the collaborative partnerships that has long existed in the Dearborn Public Schools. This new section will further enhance the commitment to valuing all suggestions, views, and opinions brought forth by all staff members in the district. The first is the Association of Dearborn Schools Administrators. None. The next is Dearborn Federation of School Employees. None. Next one is Dearborn Federation of Teachers. None. And finally, the Dearborn Schools Operating Engineers Association. No comment.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Special reports, class of 2024 accomplishments, Mr. Adam Martin.
Good evening, President Barry, Dr. Maliko, Ms. Harris, board. I'm pleased to talk a little bit about our graduates. I know it's been about six weeks since we attended all those commencement exercises, but want to brag on them a little bit. This group probably had it the most difficult in my recent memory. Their eighth grade year ended in March of 2020, if we recall, and their ninth grade year for a lot of them, because I was at Dearborn High at that point, remember, they spent up through, I think it was February, at home, learning online, adjusting to something totally different, and then we came back and had those AB days where half of them were in the building and half of them weren't, and it really ended up being about 20% in the building on one day, 20% in the building on another day, and the other 60% at home. So really, these students had over a year of uninterrupted education at a super important transitional time in their life. So they're to be commended for their accomplishments here, and I'm going to go through that pretty quickly, but I did not want that to be lost. So we had 1,664 graduates. That's down a little bit from last year. Last year, we had 1,728. In terms of scholarships, almost $10 million that we're aware of. Again, students report to us how much that is. This number isn't an exact number, it's kind of a guesstimate based on what students report to us. Some students will report scholarship money that they've been offered. Some of them will only report scholarship money that they've taken. So my guess is this number is actually lower than what our students actually get or are offered. Top school colleges that our kids enroll in, not surprising, Henry Ford, University of Michigan Dearborn, Michigan State, U of M Ann Arbor, Eastern, U of D, Lawrence Tech, and Wayne State are the primary ones we go to. We did have some of our students in the Ivy League. I threw Oxford up there, even though they're not technically in Ivy League, but MIT, Harvard, Columbia. For those Michigan State and U of M grads, sorry I didn't put them over in the Ivy League, but we have some tremendous student achievement and kids doing some great things after high school. In terms of trade schools and industry certifications, so this is kind of the work that's coming through the Michael Berry Career Center and some of our CTE programs at our traditional high schools. Trade schools on the left there, which are where kids have reported, hey, this is where I'm going. This is the highest number on the right there of industry certifications that we've had. So those industry certifications are mostly through CertiPort, and what this does is it gives them the ability to walk into a job, hey, I have this certificate, I can get right to work, which is pretty tremendous. And we're looking to continue to grow that cybersecurity and some of those other programs at Michael Berry in the future. In terms of advanced placement, and these numbers were up from last year as well, last year, we had 25 different AP courses. We're at 30. Last year, we had around 2,300 students that took AP courses. This year, we had 2,900, which is a nice jump for us. I do not have the results of how they did on the AP test. Not all of our students take the AP test, but that's something that I'll make sure when I get it in the fall to give you guys in a board brief or something like that. Onto our partnership with Henry Ford College. So we always report on our early college students who do tremendous work. The Henry Ford Early College, that's our health on the left there, 40 out of the 43 graduated, or sorry, had the 93% associate degree, 98% MTA. That means they fulfilled all of those transfer credits that can transfer to a four-year university. Average 77 credit hours. Advanced Manufacturing, 85% of those students earn an associate degrees. Again, 93% with the MTA and 83 for the average credit hours. And then our School of Education, again, 92%, 92% and 73 average credit hours. If you look at that average credit hours, an associate is 60 typically. All of those students are well above that, which is fantastic for them and fantastic for their parents' pocketbooks. For our fifth-year Collegiate Academy students, we had 123 of them. 50% of them had the associate's degree. 70% had 60 or more transferable credits, and 81% with a MTA agreement. Again, taking those courses in a one-to-one match to universities. Remember, the Collegiate Academy are students in their 11th and 12th and 13th year that are still home in one of their high schools. So it's a tremendous partnership as well. And then when you look at all of the dual enrollment or all of the HFC partnerships there, we had near 4,000 students that took HFC courses in '23, '24, which is tremendous. Dual enrollment is growing, Collegiate Academy is growing. Early College is kind of at a plateau because of space a little bit, but they're still continuing to do really well, and we're trying to leverage that partnership with HFC to provide students more career experience opportunities at HFC. If you look at the grades, and Dr. Nealan from HFC would say, our students do significantly better in terms of grades than non-high school students in terms of earning As and Bs. For your dual enrollment students, you have the percentages there, 70%, 68% getting As and Bs, Collegiate Academy 77, and the Early College 76, which is pretty tremendous. And last one here, total amounts that have been built or total amounts that have been saved for our students, over $5 million, which is incredible. So yeah, we're happy with the partnership, looking forward to continuing the partnership and growing the partnership.
And just to clarify, that $5 million is just for the one year?
That's just this year. That's just this year.
Correct.
Now, I didn't keep it specific to the senior class. I just did do year by year for that. It's too hard.
Right, yeah.
Yep. It's too hard to do that with a 13-year.
But still, it's a significant amount in just one year's time.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And ultimately, that savings is our families.
Exactly.
Then we have some good pictures here, so congratulations, class of 2024. Any questions?
Any questions? Trustee Thorpe?
When you went over the early college programs, you mentioned education, and I forget right now if it was at one of our P-12 or college meetings. Most of the students, though, that are in the education program are not necessarily going into the education field. They're using it as a, still as a stepping stone to get into college.
Correct.
Do we have a rough idea of the number that are thinking the education field?
It's a handful.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've struggled to keep them on the education side. Yeah.
When we say the education side, is the idea teacher or is it other?
Yeah. All right. So it would be anything in pre-education, right? So taking education courses, wanting to have a career in education, whether that be a professional or a social worker, or mostly teaching, and we just haven't been able to recruit a lot of students into that field.
Okay.
I think some of it, to be fair, is early college students are making a decision halfway through their eighth grade year, and for some, that's a real difficult time to say, hey, I want to be a teacher. So there's that piece, but I think we need to do a better job, too, of trying to attract kids into that pipeline.
I think it'd be pretty fair to say most of the people in this room weren't sure what they wanted to do with their life in the middle of eighth grade.
This is true. This is true.
Yes.
I just had a comment. Appreciate the presentation, Adam. Great job. Today, I met with Victoria Houston out of the governor's office. I was invited by Kelly Vandembach, who's the new executive director or president of the Chamber of Commerce, and they had a great golf outing last week. But anyway, one of the things I was mentioning was the partnership we had, because she was talking about programs and, you know, the Governor's Free College or whatever those things. We already have it here, so I want to commend and thank President Cavalluna for his outstanding leadership. You see these numbers, you can't find them anywhere else in the state, maybe even in the nation with, you know, average. So thank you, President Cavalluna, and thank you, Adam, for bringing this data forward, and the board for supporting all these initiatives. We're excited when we get to open the buildings over there soon, so.
Well, I just want to say we really need to thank Brian Wiston, because he was the one who came in with this dream that we would have free college for our students, and I was the only one left here who was on the board when we hired him, and I said, you're crazy, but boy, I love your enthusiasm, and here we are today. And I will say, I give all the credit to Brian for having that vision and sticking with it and telling us we could do it, and we certainly have outperformed what we, our expectations were.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda, non-agenda items for action. Who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees, and please keep your comments as brief as possible. There is a three-minute time limit on all comments made to the board. We do not have any blue cards.
Next item, please.
Action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
I believe we have to pull 28 for a vote.
That's what I was looking for. Is that 28?
I think it's 28.
Yeah. I don't know which, yeah, I.
28 is the designation of Board of Education voting delegates, so 28. Do we have to pull the contract, too, or?
No.
No? Okay. So other, if anybody else has any, Dr. Maliko, you're good. Just 28, Madam Secretary.
Recommended action, move then action items numbered 1 through 27, 29 through 25 be approved, I'm sorry, 29 to 35 be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of 28. So moved?
Support.
Trustee McDonald making the motion. Trustee Dambrosio supporting. Are there any questions on any of the action items? It was a tie for first.
I know. I was just wondering how you were going to handle it.
Are there any questions on any of the action items? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous roll call. An affirmative? Thank you. Let's go to 28.
28. Designation of Board of Education Voting Delegates to the MASB Delegates Assembly. Here, we need three delegates and then four and three alternates.
Let's start with who's already committed and going to the assembly. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I'll make a motion. Well, do we make a motion before the names?
I think the names have to be put in.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
Then, I wanted to clarify a couple things because I learned something at the MASB meeting. We can have up to four voting delegates because of the size of our district. We don't have to have four voting delegates. So it just means that we've got more votes when something goes to the floor. That's the only thing I wanted to mention with that. I also asked, even though I am a director, I'm also eligible to be a voting delegate, I will already be at the meeting, so I will put my name in for that.
So we pass your name in first.
Yeah, and then if anyone else wants to go in, I'm going to assume it's the normal situation where it's Thursday night for the voting, and then Friday would probably start the full conference.
I will volunteer as an alternate.
Alternate?
I will volunteer as an alternate. That's my birthday weekend, and I don't plan on being in town.
Anybody else committed to go into the conference?
I haven't committed.
Okay.
But we have to fill in the blanks. It doesn't mean.
Yeah, we fill in the names first before.
Yeah. So throw me in.
For which one?
As a vote. Well, you already got, don't you have three? Wait.
No, we said alternate.
Okay, so alternate.
So for the first four.
Well, why?
The rest of four delegates, sir.
Trustee Mosip and myself.
There you go.
Is alternate, Trustee Dambrosio, Trustee McDonald, and Trustee Watts.
You got everybody?
Yep.
Now, we're looking for a motion.
I'd make a motion to move forward with the assignment of voting delegates and alternates as listed.
Okay.
Support.
We have a motion moved by Trustee Thorpe, supported by Trustee Mosip. Are there any objections to the motion? Okay.
Recommended action, move that Board of Education select the following voting delegates: Trustee Thorpe, Trustee Barry, Trustee Mosip, Trustee Petchikoff, and the three alternates: Trustee Watts, Trustee McDonald, and Trustee Dambrosio to represent our Board of Education at the MASB Delegate Assembly to be held on Thursday, October 24th, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the Lansing Center in Lansing.
That was a unanimous roll call. Dr. Maliko, did you have any comments on the action items?
Yeah.
Well, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can I, I just want to acknowledge one thing here because today, not a usual board business for P-12, is we had two college items on here, and I just wanted to thank, I was chairing the Building and Site Committee that we had a meeting of, and we did vote tonight on a contract for STAN Tech to represent the college's newest endeavor after the voters so resoundingly approved a bond to go out and reconfigure our college campus. So I just wanted to acknowledge tonight that we did have the people who were involved with that selection committee for the architecture firm that is going to move us forward into a new campus experience, and I wanted to thank them for all the hard work they did, and they're coming here tonight and allowing us to use July's P-12 board meeting because we didn't have a college meeting in order to pass this through and get the ball rolling as quickly as possible.
Thank you for noting that. Dr. Maliko?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to congratulate and call up to the podium a few new of our appointments. Can call up Mr. Mohammed Abu Sallah for the new principal of McCullough-UNIS. Can call up Mr. Mohammed Abu Salaf for the new principal of Macaulay-UNIS. Congratulations, Mohammed.
All right. As a proud product of Dearborn Schools, it is truly a privilege to accept the position of Macaulay-UNIS. First and foremost, I want to extend my deepest thanks to the school board, the directors, and Superintendent Dr. Maliko. I'm excited to work alongside everyone to continue to build a strong foundation that has been established in Dearborn Public Schools. Being part of Dearborn Public Schools has shaped who I am, and now I continue to have this incredible opportunity to give back. I look forward to collaborating with our teachers, family, and building or continuing to build what Mr. Farah started at UNIS. Thank you once again for this remarkable opportunity. Together, I'm confident we will continue to make a positive impact and achieve great things. Thank you, and go Aviators.
Next, we have the new principal at Miller Elementary, Amal Shihab.
Good evening. Good evening, President Berry, Board Trustees, Dr. Maliko, and the entire executive cabinet. Thank you for entrusting me with our students and the Miller community. I am excited for this opportunity to lead and continue the great work with our amazing Miller staff, students, and families. I am grateful for our Miller family and its dedication to helping our students grow and succeed. I also want to thank all the mentors I have had along this journey, and especially Ms. Abdullah. It was an honor to lead alongside you, and you continue to inspire me. Finally, I want to thank my own family for their continuous love and support. I'm looking forward to a great school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Do you have someone with you?
My husband's here.
And we also have, congratulations to her again. Next, we have for Long Elementary, Ms. Yvonne Lewis. Congratulations.
Good evening, esteemed Board and Dr. Maliko. I want to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm honored by the trust and confidence placed in me to serve as principal after a very thorough interview process. As I am grateful to have been selected for the Dearborn School District, I bring a wealth of experience with me, having most recently served as the central office in the central office capacity with the Harper Woods School District for over half a decade. While I have enjoyed working with the staff and students and the community there, I am eager to return to my role, eager to return to my role as a building principal. I look forward to working with the dedicated staff and students at Long Elementary. As a principal, my goal is to foster an environment of academic excellence, inclusivity, mutual respect. And I am committed to collaborating with the board, teachers, parents, and students to continue academic success and supportive, inspiring environment at Long Elementary. Again, thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to working with you all, you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. We have one more appointment, but he is not available summer and with plans. So, he'll be come at the next meeting. We always give them the option, so Mr. Baydoun. We're very excited about all four appointments, and we're ready to roll, and you can see they're excited as well. So, congratulations to them, to our students, to the board.
Madam Secretary, I apologize for jumping the gun. We'll go back to the summary of agenda action items.
Number one, summary of agenda action items. Number one through two, approval of an award to Delta Network Services. Number three, approval of an award to Moss Audio Corporation. Number four, approval of an award to Severin Intermediate Holdings Schoolology. Number five, approval of an award to AMCOM Incorporated. Number six, approval of an award to Zoom Video Communications, Inc. Number seven, approval of an award to Curriculum Associates LLC. Number eight, approval of an award to FD Hayes. Number nine, approval of an award to Frontline Technologies. Number ten, approval of an award to the Autism Helper. Number eleven, approval of an award to CERBA, AKA Fast Bridge. Number twelve, approval of an award to Decima Construction. Number thirteen, approval of an award to Nagel Paving Company. Number fourteen, approval of an award to the Michigan Recreational Construction, Inc., per Board Report twenty-four hyphen zero six. Number fifteen, approval of an award to SecureTech, Inc., Services, per Board Report twenty-four hyphen zero seven. Number sixteen, approval of an award to Midwest Carpet Cleaning, per Board Report twenty-four hyphen zero eight. Number seventeen, approval of an award to We Build Fund, per Board Report twenty-four hyphen zero nine. Number eighteen, approval of change orders. Number nineteen through twenty-one, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number twenty-two, approval of an award to STAN-Tech for Henry Ford College, per Board Report twenty-four hyphen thirteen. Number twenty-three, approval of financial statement, per Board Report twenty-four hyphen fourteen. Number twenty-four, approval of the 2024 high school graduates, per Board Report twenty-four hyphen fifteen. Number twenty-five, approval of the cooperative agreement with Wayne Westland Schools, per Board Report twenty-four hyphen sixteen. Number twenty-six, approval of the extension of the non-classified, non-instructional staff and exempt administrative secretary's contract. Number twenty-seven, approval of the extension of the exempt administrator's contract. Number twenty-eight, approval of the designation of Board of Education voting delegates to the MASB Delegates Assembly. Number twenty-nine, approval of donations. Number thirty, approval of winter 2024 proposed TIF projects for Henry Ford College, per Board Report twenty-four hyphen seventeen. Number thirty-one, approval of the 2024, 2020 through 2027 collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Trustees and the Henry Ford College Support Staff Associations. Number thirty-two, appointment of principal, Macaulay-UNIS K-12, K-8. Number thirty-three, appointment of principal at Miller Elementary. Number thirty-four, appointment of principal at Long Elementary. And finally, number thirty-five, appointment of principal of secondary virtual.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this point, I'd like to call on Henry Ford College President, President Cavalluna. Some comments, please.
Thank you, President Berry, trustees, board members. Good evening. It's good to see you all. Happy summer. Dr. Maliko, thank you for allowing me a bit of the time on your agenda. I just want to add a few comments to what the Chair of the College's Building and Site Committee said on the item that Secretary Watts just listed about Henry Ford College entering an agreement to design a transformational project on our campus. I've got two of my colleagues here who I do want to identify as being some of the heaviest lifters in the work that we undertook to pick this firm. You have interim Director of Purchasing, Dan Murray. Go ahead and raise your hand, Dan. And then the Director of Facilities, Ruben Brockley, both fantastic partners. One, an actual Dearborn resident, and I couldn't be more proud of the work they've done. It was a lot of work in a short amount of time, and in the next couple of months, we'll be doing another request for proposals for a construction firm. And then hopefully, very soon, you'll have some pictures of what this new transformational project will look like. So, thank you to the Building and Site Committee through its leadership with the Chair, Trustee Petlicoff, and its members, Secretary Watts and Trustee Thorpe. It's an exciting time to be at the college, and letting this contract go forward today is a privilege. And also, I know you've given me a bit of leeway in allowing it to be on your agenda, so I appreciate that. Just like that, another important development for Henry Ford College and a couple of my teammates here are here to say thank you, and I have the chance to say it for them. That is the contract you just ratified between the SSA, the Support Staff Administration, and the college. That contract was negotiated by that Support Staff President, Joni Morris, who is here. Go ahead and raise your hand, Joni, who's also a Dearborn resident, who I'm working to try and get one of the trees removed from her, what is that area between the sidewalk and the road?
The easement.
The easement, yeah. Joni and I are working on getting a tree out of her yard. But that's not a union matter. The college was ably represented by an attorney and an assistant director of HR, Mark Tate, who's also here. And I just want to say to them, thank you for negotiating in good faith. And here, again, just like the district, we have a proud history of collective bargaining happening in a respectful and appreciative way. And when there's so much going on in our country where there are different opinions and different interests, unlike the kind of dysfunction we see you have both in Dr. Maliko's team and at the college, collective bargaining and administration coming together with a really great contract for both entities. And the reason why I asked for, and I'm grateful that you put it on your agenda tonight, was that rather than wait another month, both sides of this agreement now can benefit from some of the really great advancements, which are both helping us build a team with hiring, but also helping staff enjoy the benefits of an improved contract. So, I talk fast, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. President, but I wanted to identify my partners, because Trustee Petlicoff suggested that this was my work. And the reality is, it wasn't. The folks behind me are the ones that deserve the credit, and that's all I have to say. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Discussion items. There are none.
Next item?
Board of Education Business, acknowledgment of correspondence.
Anybody, I did receive a couple of phone calls from residents and a phone call from an attorney with an issue they want us to deal with. And I'm kind of, I appreciate them reaching out to me instead of blind signing us at a school board meeting. I did reach out to my vice president right away at a long discussion, reached out to all my colleagues and Dr. Maliko. And what we're going to do with this is just hand off to Policy Committee. So, I'll be in discussion with the Chair, Trustee Mosib, and we'll handle it that way. Next item, please.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Trustee Thorpe.
It was mentioned earlier that the first meeting of the Michigan Association of School Boards that I was a part of met last week. This is a bi-monthly meeting, and with talking with President Berry, we thought it might be best for me just to give updates as to what's going on at the state level during the committee reporting time. Main things we did was just kind of like to get to know you, like we've done with our group, looking at personality types, figure out how we can work best together. Got an in-depth look at what went on with the budget. And no one is happy with how this went down. There are a lot of angry legislators that agreed to vote for the budget with an assumption that there was going to be another bill brought forward immediately afterwards. It wasn't. So, there's still talk about trying to keep some of these things going. The state only gave us a one-year reprieve on the MIPSers contribution. Because they did that, they thought there was no real need to give us a per pupil increase, and they took away just about everything that schools were getting for safety. Just twenty-five million in the current budget for the whole state, which, if I remember the number right, is seventeen dollars per student, so not much. So, there is still another bill in the House, I believe it is. And we can keep reaching out to all of the legislators, either those that represent us locally or other ones that we know in other districts, and keep asking them to keep supporting it so we can possibly get some of this money back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't think there's any other reports.
Can I just comment on that, too? Obviously, being heavily involved with the Superintendent Association, we had that joint letter. All the education groups were agreement, because the MIPSers was overfunded by employee contributions. So, we were really hoping for an additional increase into the foundation on top of that. That's what districts were hoping. But hopefully, as President, or excuse me, Trustee Thorpe mentioned, we can get some of this, continue to work together. And again, all the associations were aligned. I've never seen it in all the years I've been on the board. So, we'll take the positive approach, but appreciate that, Trustee.
And I met last month with Senator Santana when she had a coffee hour, and we had a long discussion, because she's on that budget board for the state senate. And she was frustrated as well that things were convoluted. They kind of were, you know, she thought they were going in one direction and things would shift a lot. So, I think we really do need to keep up the conversation about what the reality is of what we all really need in order to move our students forward in a, you know, progressive way rather than finding excuses for pulling funding back.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
I got a couple of things. For when a board member is going to be traveling, please let the President or Chair know. That's been our policy. And there's no reason not to approve any travel expenses. We're thankful when people step up to the plate. So, just let us know that, that, I mean, Jim reached out to me a couple of weeks ago, and I said, yes, of course. Thank you very much. You're taking time away from your family. I believe you missed out on a golf outing or something?
I can't remember where I was. I've been...
You were supposed to be, but anyways, yeah, so that's that. The other thing is, this year's election year for school board members, and we have, I believe, eight or nine candidates?
Ten.
Ten? Ten candidates? Thank you, Pat. So, ten candidates. I know Trustee Thorpe is running for reelection. And my good friend, Trustee McDonald, decided not to run for reelection. We are very thankful for your service for all these years. I'm sure there will be a different time. We will celebrate, and it'll be good, so.
If I can just say, it's been such an honor to serve this district and this community for the many years that I have. And it will certainly be a highlight of my life. So, I appreciate the opportunity and getting to know everyone and the staff and the students and the administration and the teachers. It's just been a joy, mostly.
To be continued. You always going to be a phone call away, so that's all I have. Next item, please.
Request for Information and/or Future Agenda Items.
Anybody? No, I wanted to say thank you to all the candidates that stepped up to the plate. We are very thankful. So, okay.
One quick item, going back to the appointments of the new principals. Are we working on dates for the meet the principal events? And can you make sure to share those with the board?
Sure.
Thanks.
Yes. And to the candidates, we will be setting up. You want to go ahead and talk?
Yeah, usually, we set up a meeting in September where we invite all the candidates, and they can come learn about the district, invite our cabinet members. And I know President Cavalluna does the same at the college, and we, you know, work together. And, you know, and I know the board, over my years, is, you know, President Cavalluna and I, we're not involved. And, you know, we don't go to any fundraisers or things like that. We stay neutral. That's kind of how we've been directed by the board, and that's what we'll continue. I don't want to speak for him, but I know he's done that as well. He's nodding his head, and we usually talk about that as well.
Sure, great. Thank you. Next item, please.
Future Meeting Dates. Monday, August nineteenth, 2024, P-12 Board Meeting, seven p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Ranchy Boardroom. Wednesday, August twenty-first, 2024, P-12 Board Training, six p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in Room Twelve. And Monday, August twenty-sixth, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, seven p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Thank you. It is seven forty-seven, and we are adjourned.